Good evening. I'll call the August 12th to 2025 regular session to order. Ms. Dance, all board members are present. We will begin tonight with the invocation from Mr. Tippett and the pledge allegiance from one of our students, but Dr. Bracy, I just wanted you to introduce our student. Excuse me, Dr. Pierce, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we are going to start a new tradition here in Johnston County by having one of our students come and lead us in our pledge during the time. And so, Mr. Abdul Stewart is a senior at Career Technical Leadership Academy, which is one of two of our schools that's already had students return. He is a brilliant, kind, and quiet, and he has humbly prefers to remain in the background. Abdul is earning his high school diploma as an associate's degree in information technology. After graduation, Abdul plans to continue his education at UNC Greensboro, majoring in computer science. Today, Mr. Stewart will lead us in our pledge of allegiance when it's time. Welcome, Abdul.
Spicious Hallelujah, Father. We thank you for the opportunity to get together here tonight, Father, to address the business of this school system. Father, we just thank you for all the blessings that you've given us. Father, we ask now for your continued blessings, Father. As we start a new school year, Father, we ask for you could, that you provide that continued hedge of protection, Father, around our students or on our staff, anybody involved in our, within our school system, Father. Father, we just ask that you, that you touch them, give them the mercy, the grace, and all that they need to do their jobs, Father, and to help mold the minds of our young people, Father, and you give every student in this county the opportunities that they need and deserve, Father. And, Father, we ask that you be with us, and as we conduct this business, Father, we pray that it be done in a, in a decent manner, Father, and according to your will. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end, just for all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Abdul. I will now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we enter into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, that's 318, A1, 3, 5, and 6, to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 115(c), that's 321, to consider matters relating to the initial employment of an individual employee and to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney and client privilege.
I have a motion. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donovan. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of going into closed session, please indicate by say and ah. Any opposed? Thank you. We are now in closed session.
Welcome to Johnston County Public Schools, where innovation meets excellence and every student is inspired to soar. With over 37,000 students and more than 5,000 dedicated professionals, we are more than just a school district. We are a family, a vibrant, growing, diverse community with one clear goal: academic excellence. Our North Star, student proficiency and academic growth. And by staying true to this vision, Johnston County Public Schools has earned district-wide recognition for excellence. As our population grows, so does our commitment. With the help of our Board of Commissioners and dedicated stakeholders, we're building new schools, modernizing facilities, and creating innovative learning environments designed for 21st century success. This is a community-wide effort, a partnership built on trust, collaboration, and a shared vision for the future. At Johnston County Public Schools, we believe that every student deserves the opportunity to thrive, in the classroom and in life. And every educator and employee deserves a career where they can grow and make an impact. We are Johnston County Public Schools, united in purpose and committed to excellence. Join us as we build the future, one student at a time.
Come on, a little bit louder. Forward. And what you need to know, and we know this, is when leaders rise, kids win. And we're all about kids winning.
And I think that the plan that Dr. Pierce has already laid out for us, that he understands that academic and student growth is going to be one of his number one priorities. And as a community, the community re-engage about how we're going to make sure that students are growing at the same time.
Yeah, so I think back to kind of in his opening statement, Dr. Pierce talked a little bit about something that resonated with me, which was being clear is to be kind. And kindness is something that's, it's an important character trait for me. I like to look at it for other people. I want to represent that. And I think that that is one thing I can, a little step that I can take, right? Like clarity in my instructions, what I'm asking from other people, or what we're going to do and why we're going to do it, is going to be an important step that helps keeping up, helps us keep moving forward as we go through. So I want to be clear, so that I can be kind.
This assistant principal is a tremendous asset to the school and to Johnston County Public Schools. She is a highly supportive and positive leader who consistently goes above and beyond for both staff and students. She leads by example, demonstrating a strong work ethic, building meaningful relationships, and maintaining a positive presence throughout the school. Her professional development sessions are engaging and impactful, and she ensures all staff feel heard and valued. From greeting the community to helping with pre-K breakfast, she is deeply involved in all aspects of school life. Her energy, encouragement, and respectful communication make her a role model and make coming to work enjoyable for everyone at school. Please help me congratulate Ms. Lauren Strickland, Assistant Principal of the Year, formerly from Pine Level Elementary, and currently the AP at Palenta Elementary. This principal is a transformational leader who sets high expectations while fostering a supportive, positive, and empowering school environment. She is deeply committed to the success of both students and staff, providing the tools, guidance, and encouragement needed for everyone to thrive. Known for her compassion, professionalism, and open-door leadership, she builds strong relationships and leads by example. Under her visionary guidance, our school has seen remarkable improvements in academic achievement, school culture, and community engagement. Our school has become a place where all stakeholders feel seen, heard, and valued. Her visibility, consistency, and empathy set her apart as a truly exceptional leader. Please help me congratulate Dr. Tekisi Dunston, our Amy Renfro Leadership Principal of the Year from Benson Elementary.
I'm so grateful for all of them and the support that they provide every day. I call them my base, because every principal needs a base. You need someone that you can go to in the toughest of times. Ms. Holloman can attest to when I was out with cancer, and I would text her and say, "But I just want to be there so bad." And she'd say, "Take care of you and then come back to us." Because the work is not done, it's only begun. So let's go together throughout this year, making it another great year.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Nolte. I recently graduated from West Johnston High School, and I'm the recipient of the Park Scholarship at North Carolina State University. I was definitely shocked when I opened the email that said that I received the Park Scholarship, but I was obviously very incredibly grateful for the opportunity. And it felt like all of my hard work had really paid off. And I'm very excited to spend the next four years at NC State, but more than that, just to be a member of the Park Scholarship community. I'm attending North Carolina State University, and I'm majoring in mechanical engineering, and I think I may minor in computer science. A lot of things excite me about mechanical engineering. And I think what excites me the most is just having the opportunity to solve real-world problems. I've had the opportunity to have a lot of hands-on engineering experience through robotics, and I'm really just excited to do that on the collegiate level and to take higher, like, level classes and courses, and just also to do it with other students who are also passionate about engineering. And something that I'm really passionate about is advocating for underserved students in STEM. And I just think it's really important for everyone to have access to see where STEM can take them and the different opportunities it can open up for them. Something that I do is I help teach, girls teach tech classes at the Clayton Library, actually. And it's free technology classes for girls, grade six to eight, and we teach different classes like artificial intelligence, 3D printing, machine learning. And it's just to give everyone and say that anyone can do STEM. I'm most excited just to meet new people and have the opportunity to make new friends, and just to experience life kind of in the new environment of being at college. I'm excited to try all the new opportunities at State, especially different student organizations for advocacy, robotics, and women in STEM, and just also to be able to be around students who are passionate about engineering as well.
Welcome to Johnston County Public Schools, where there's always something great happening. Today, we're taking you on a visual tour, giving you an update on our 2022 bond projects, and showing you exactly where we stand as we begin planning for our upcoming 2024 bond initiatives. First, we're taking you to Princeton Middle High, where we've implemented some vital transformations. The primary goal was to provide restroom facilities that are fully compliant with current codes and offer enhanced ADA accessibility, ensuring comfort and safety for everyone. In addition, we've also significantly improved the school's infrastructure by adding a dedicated equipment storage area and the capacity for another concession stand to better serve the needs of the school community. Our next stop is Cooper Academy, a campus that's undergone a major renovation, as these pictures clearly show. When we first met with stakeholders, including students and staff, a consistent theme emerged: the need for a connector to unify the entire school. Thanks to the 2022 bond, we were able to add 20 classrooms, two resource rooms, three staff workrooms, several much-needed group restrooms, and new offices. These additions have truly tied the school together. Cooper Academy also has a touch of the 2024 bond in its future. It's one of the schools slated for a fire alarm upgrade, a project that's now underway, further enhancing safety and modernization. Our next stop is Swift Creek Elementary, a truly exciting addition to Johnston County Public Schools. This marks our 25th elementary school, which is a testament to our district's vibrant growth. This new campus is designed to meet a variety of needs. It will help alleviate the need for mobile classrooms at other sites, like Palenta, while also looking to the future as our county continues its rapid expansion. Inside, the new elementary school offers a complimentary mix of color and value, creating an inviting learning environment. The principal and some staff have already moved in, beginning to make themselves at home in this fantastic new space. Last, but certainly not least, on our tour of the 2022 bond projects, is the truly ambitious Wilsons Mills High School. This isn't just a construction site. It is a full-scale project where every feature is progressing simultaneously due to its sheer size and scope. As you watch, you'll see the third story taking shape, with ceiling hangers just beginning to go into place, defining the future classrooms and hallways. Look closer, and you'll see that sheet rock is being hung, and vital electrical, plumbing, and sprinkler systems are being meticulously installed throughout the building. At the same time, some exterior walls are already receiving their brick and glass facades. These recent drone photos illustrate just how much this monumental project has advanced in the past 12 months, rapidly moving from concept to a tangible, impressive structure that will soon serve our growing community.
College Academy, and I am the recipient of an Athletic Track and Field Scholarship to A&amp;T. My immediate reaction was like, dang, like, that's, I really made it this far. I showed my mom, she was like, she was tearing up and all that, just felt amazing. It was like, dang, you really, really made it. I'm really going D1, because that's been a dream of mine since I was a little kid. I know it's been my dad's plan, my mom's plan. I really just, yeah, I just gave it, like, put into reality, honestly. So we always definitely having an emotional time opening up that letter, yeah, for sure. So right now, I plan to go to North Carolina A&amp;T for computer engineering, plan on majoring in computer engineering. I love, like, the intricate parts of computers. Like, I've always been into, like, technology and all that. I built my own PC and took apart my own PC and then put it back together, you know what I'm saying? So I feel like, as long as I'm into the hardware and aesthetic aspect of building PCs, I feel like I could really do that for the rest of my life. During orientation, I definitely saw a lot of different people, you know? Like, during the orientation, we was calling out our area codes, and like, people from Texas, people from LA. So it's like, I really get to experience all of that in one space, pretty much, instead of going out, having to go all different parts of the country. So I'm definitely excited for that social aspect. Now, the track team, traveling with the track team on the bus, that's gonna be fun. I'm ready, I'm excited for that, for sure.
Welcome to Johnston County Public Schools, where innovation meets excellence and every student is inspired to soar. With over 37,000 students and more than 5,000 dedicated professionals, we are more than just a school district. We are a family, a vibrant, growing, diverse community with one clear goal: academic excellence. Our North Star: student proficiency and academic growth. And by staying true to this vision, Johnston County Public Schools has earned district-wide recognition for excellence. As our population grows, so does our commitment. With the help of our Board of Commissioners and dedicated stakeholders, we're building new schools, modernizing facilities, and creating innovative learning environments designed for 21st century success. This is a community-wide effort, a partnership built on trust, collaboration, and a shared vision for the future. At Johnston County Public Schools, we believe that every student deserves the opportunity to thrive, in the classroom and in life. And every educator and employee deserves a career where they can grow and make an impact. We are Johnston County Public Schools, united in purpose and committed to excellence. Join us as we build the future, one student at a time.
Come on, a little bit louder. Forward. And what you need to know, and we know this, is when leaders rise, kids win. And we're all about kids winning.
And I think that the plan that Dr. Pierce has already laid out for us, that he understands that academic and student growth is gonna be one of his number-one priorities, and as a community, the community will gauge about how we're gonna make sure that students are growing at the same time.
Yeah, so I think back to kind of in this opening statement, Dr. Pierce talked a little bit about something that resonated with me, which was, being clear is to be kind. And kindness is something that's an important character trait for me. I like to look at it for other people, I want to represent that. And I think that that is one thing I can, a little step that I can take, right? Like, clarity in my instruction, and what I'm asking from other people, or what we're gonna do and why we're gonna do it, is gonna be an important step that helps keep it up, helps us keep moving forward as we go through. So I wanna be clear, so that can be counted.
This Assistant Principal is a tremendous asset to the school and to Johnston County Public Schools. She is a highly supportive and positive leader who consistently goes above and beyond for both staff and students. She leads by example, demonstrating a strong work ethic, building meaningful relationships, and maintaining a positive presence throughout the school. Her professional development sessions are engaging and impactful, and she ensures all staff feel heard and valued. From greeting the community to helping with pre-K breakfast, she is deeply involved in all aspects of school life. Her energy, encouragement, and respectful communication make her a role model and make coming to work enjoyable for everyone at school. Please help me congratulate Ms. Lauren Strickland, Assistant Principal of the Year, formerly from Pine Level Elementary and currently the AP at Palenta Elementary. This principal is a transformational leader who sets high expectations while fostering a supportive, positive, and empowering school environment. She is deeply committed to the success of both students and staff, providing the tools, guidance, and encouragement needed for everyone to thrive. Known for her compassion, professionalism, and open-door leadership, she builds strong relationships and leads by example. Under her visionary guidance, our school has seen remarkable improvements in academic achievement, school culture, and community engagement. Our school has become a place where all stakeholders feel seen, heard, and valued. Her visibility, consistency, and empathy set her apart as a truly exceptional leader. Please help me congratulate Dr. Tekisi Dunston, our Amy Renfro Leadership Principal of the Year from Benson Elementary.
I'm so grateful for all of them and the support that they provide every day. I call them my base, because every principal needs a base. You need someone that you can go to in the toughest of times. Ms. Holloman can attest to when I was out with cancer, and I would text her and say, "But I just wanna be there so bad." And she'd say, "Take care of you, and then come back to us." Because the work is not done, it's only begun. So let's go together throughout this year, making it another great year.
Welcome back, board members and members of our audience and our staff. We have already been in closed session, we already had our invocation, and we had a student, Abdul Stewart, lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance, which we will start to do from now on, so we're excited about that. Board members, we will move on with our regular session. Our first item is the approval of minutes. So I will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes for the July 8th meeting.
Some of it.
I have a motion by Mr. Donovan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lee, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the July 8th regular session minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we'll move to the closed session minutes of the July 8th, 2025 meeting. I'll entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Mr. Carroll, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tippett, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the July 8th, 2025 closed session minutes, as written, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we'll move to the July 28th, 2025 Special Personnel Session Minutes. I'll entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Mr. Carroll, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tippett, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote of the approval of the July 28th, 2025 Special Personnel Session Minutes. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the last July 8th, 2025 Special Personnel Closed Session Minutes. I'll entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Ms. Lee, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Sullivan, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the approval of the July 28th, 2025 Special Personnel Closed Session Minutes. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Board members, any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I have a question about the surveys that are on the agenda. There's surveys on the... It's number six.
Just, just... There are renewals for survey? I don't know if you need somebody to come speak at it, or are you asking for an adjustment?
Yeah, I'd like to pull that one out.
Okay, that would be under Ms. Kikekendall, okay? And we would make that... Okay, we can do it... Consent? Okay, so we will put it as B after Consent, and we'll move items for the Chief of Human Resources down to C. Follow that? So B, it would be 6B. And we will go over those surveys. So we are removing one item from Consent. So that leaves you with six items. Anything else? Hearing none, I'll call for the approval of the agenda as it has been amended. I will entertain a motion.
Some move.
Motion by Mr. Tippett, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Antoine, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the approval of the agenda as it has been amended. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Pierce?
Yes, Madam Chair, at this time I ask that the board approve consent items number one through six as amended.
I have a motion by Mr. Carroll, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Sullivan, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote of approval of the Superintendent's Report for Consent Agendas. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Kikekendall.
Good evening, board members, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Dr. Pierce. We do not have a presentation on the surveys, because they were in Consent. As we talked about in the Board Review Session a week ago, these surveys are the same surveys that you all approved last year. They are district surveys. Given per Board policy, you all have to approve them. The only ones that are new, if you scroll down, the Students Success Curriculum. So these are part of the Students Success Curriculum that we adopted. They're not necessarily surveys, they're self-assessment questions as part of the curriculum. But those are all there, and they've been there for you all to peruse, so I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all might have. And forgive me, I'm not really out of breath, I'm just... Sorry. No, 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 I'm fine. I just don't have as much room with my lungs.
I'm curious, the student competencies and student supports and environment...
Yes, ma'am.
Are we using Panorama surveys?
Oh, yes, sorry.
So it's Panorama that we're, again, using? I thought we were going to move away from Panorama.
We are, so remember, we renewed it for this year. Yep, so we're continuing to use it this year in the hopes that we can use Infinite Campus as part of that for next year, for surveys and...
Okay, I wasn't sure if we renewed it for the last year, but we're moving forward this full year with it again.
Yes, you all approved the renewal just for one more year.
Well, not all of us, but most of us.
I'm sorry, yes, I meant you all as the collective board.
That was the question I had about the surveys. The rest of them looked fine.
Okay.
Anything else? This is an action item, so I will entertain a motion.
What, you're gonna motion for a talk?
Well, it's nice to get a motion and a second. I will entertain a motion for approval of the surveys.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Donovan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tippett, now.
If you haven't read...
I mean, I'm not big on surveys, but that's really a good survey.
I'm sorry, that's really a good survey, that I hope all of our CTE groups are using something similar to that, because that's the direction we wanna to go with the career opportunities and jobs, and that's really a in-depth survey for the automotive one. If you guys didn't get a chance to pull that up and look at it, it's really, that's probably one of the better ones on here than I think, anyway.
I agree with you, and I kinda actually like the new, the match surveys, where we're talking about wellness and health and some of the things like that for some of our kids, too. And honestly, my complaint is with Panorama, and that we continue to pay them millions of dollars for craziness, but that's neither here nor there.
Any other discussion?
Just a quick question, I was just looking over the automotive survey. What are the teachers taking and using this for? Are they just using it to gauge interest, or kind of the direction that they're taking the students?
Yes, so as it says, it's part of the program accreditation process. So it's used for both those things, for accreditation to continue to be an accredited program, but then also to improve the program.
Gotcha, thank you.
And are we switching, are we switching to Infinite now for the...
High schools.
For the, no, for the platform? I'm changing topics.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I should've told you. Are we switching, are we in the process of switching from Panorama to Infinite now this year, or...
So, yes, we're looking at how that goes, to see if, we know that we will not use Panorama after this year, we understand that. But in the event that Infinite Campus is not as robust as we need it to be, we would need to look at other vendors.
Right, okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approval of the surveys as presented to us, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Ms. Edmondson?
Good evening. I have the pleasure to present to you tonight the Superintendent's Recommendations. We have four recommendations for Assistant Principals, and these are being recommended for a two-year contract. First, we have Lisa Graham, who is being recommended as Assistant Principal at Cleveland Elementary School. Jonathan Anderson is being recommended for Assistant Principal at Smithfield-Selma High School. Elizabeth Stevenson is being recommended for Riverwood Elementary School, and Nicholas Taylor is being recommended for Smithfield Middle School.
I will entertain a motion for approval of these candidates.
Some of it.
A motion by Mr. Donovan, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Carroll, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for the approval by a vote. All those in favor of these recommendations, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt?
Good evening, good evening, board, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Dr. Pierce, and the rest of the board. Tonight I bring before you an action item for invitation, we did an IFB on May 29th, an invitation for bid, and it is Capital Projects' recommendation to go ahead with Royals Contracting of Durham, North Carolina, for these unit rate pricings.
This is an action item, I'll entertain a motion for approval. A motion by Ms. Lee, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Sullivan, any discussion?
How many bids are received?
Three.
Were the vendors, is it listed?
It is not on this, but I could definitely get that for you.
And this is for which? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get up to speed.
You're good.
It's been...
So we would have to get three bids for every time we have a job, based on unit pricing. Stevie, you might want to speak more to it.
Yeah, that's, it allows you to utilize that pricing throughout the year, actually, I guess it's three years. Something we haven't really been able to do much lately, due to inflation, a lot of vendors won't give you a price for greater than just a few weeks. And so, yeah, once we can, hopefully we can get back towards this route with like now prices.
And I think the thing that I would say, because I think we mentioned last week, is we don't have to use this if we find somebody giving it lower, or whatever the deal is, this is, they can't, they won't go higher than this, but we don't have to use them if we have somebody lower than this.
Correct, because the state statute is still...
Correct, because the state statute is still 499, and after 499,000, no matter what, we have to do sealed bids. We don't, we're not locked into having to use just them. But this gives us the opportunity for, especially smaller projects, to not have to get three quotes, because that becomes problematic for us all the time.
Is that problematic?
So what we're experiencing, Ms. Antoine, is companies are reluctant to come give us bids, because they're like, we bid with you, we bid with you, we bid, we never get anything, someone else always is lower. And so getting the three bids becomes almost an obstacle at times, is what's happened to us.
I guess you feel like it might delay a project, I understand that. But I haven't seen this. And I don't know any, I don't know any subs right now that are going to give you anything beyond a 60- or 90-day price and hold to it. So this is very interesting to me. But you can also put it out to bid, is what you're saying, you're not beholden to this number. Okay, I just need to think about it a little more, I guess.
I did have a question, so we have the ability not to go with this. If the prices get so high that it's not in their best interest, do they have the ability to also not take on the work?
They will be under a contract, that would be a legal answer for sure. I mean, I wouldn't want to answer a legal question, but contract, this will be a contract that they would...
Not afford to be held to these prices. Interesting, okay.
There's no way a sub could hold these prices for three years, this is insanity. And I don't believe that they're going to have a contract, if they have an attorney drawing up the contract on their behalf, that would allow them to be roped into a price for three years from now that they would lose, I mean, they could potentially lose their business if you put enough jobs out there that you're committing them to, that they are qualified and have to perform. So this, to me, I don't understand this, is this something that you've done in the past? With what kind of businesses?
So, yes, public entities and military, private businesses, a lot of companies, and will do the same process. If you can lock in a price now, and then use that price in the future, yeah, that saves you a lot of time and can save you money. I'd love to do it for a whole lot more stuff, you know, chairs and paper and other things. So if we can, if we can ever get back to where vendors will give us a locked-in pricing for...
Vendors, I understand, even janitorial services, when we use bus, when we use vans outside of the county, things like that. I understand that they can give you a contract price for a year or something like that. This is a whole different world, because you're talking about the price of aggregate, the price of everything, it changes, it fluctuates with the market. You can't, I've never seen something like this, and maybe, maybe they exist, and maybe I just haven't seen it, and that's fine. I'd like to see the contract. I wouldn't vote for this until I actually saw a contract to see what the commitments of the board to this company are, as well as them to us. And there's no contract attached to this that I'm aware of, there's just a pricing, is that correct?
Correct. Correct.
Not voting on a contract.
Right, but there's a contract that's going along with them, because you're saying, they're saying, oh, these prices are good for three years. Well, what's the contract commitment to them? Because they could, they could just say that, and then you, I just, there needs to be more than this, is there more to this? Is there a contract between them and us?
There will be, but we wouldn't be able to have a contract till the board okay's this.
So once this is done, there'll be a contract drawn up, am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
And just...
They're giving us a price over a three-year period that they are saying that they will do these jobs, well, correct?
Correct.
And if, for some reason, they can't do it, I guess they're not obligated. They're obligated, if they bid on a project, if it goes to bid, this is their bid, correct?
So my understanding, board, is tonight, and we're more than willing to do this, you're voting to accept this offer of their pricing, their IFB. We will not do any jobs with them until we bring you back a contract, and then you can put on the contract separately. That'll at least give us a chance to move forward. We'd lose nothing, we're not going to do any jobs with them, we're just saying that we're accepting this pricing, and then we'll come back with you all with a contract. If you don't want to go with it, then this is null and void.
No, I think, and we had a long discussion about this, Ms. Antoine, last week, because this, I think I made a statement that's almost too good to be true. And sometimes you're leery about stuff like that. But the thing we want to do is make sure that the board isn't under any obligation whatsoever. And I get why they want, why this company would do that, they have a small increase in price each year. And I see that, because I think they want to be the company. And what I'm thinking is, you pave this driveway here, you fix potholes over here, you do different things, small jobs. I think that's probably what this company's angling for. At least the best I can interpret it. But just, we got to make sure that we don't have any, we can't lose anything in the deal. We're not, so I think that that's the concerns that we talked about last week, and I think that's why Ms. Antoine's bringing it up now. But, you know, I guess if the first step is to say, we will work with these prices if you give us that kind of contract, is that's what we're saying? Is that, am I correct?
I don't think we have anything to compare this to. I mean, you just gave us one set of prices, and it's a, like, for asphalt overlay, it's a per-square-yard price of $12 per square yard. And then it goes up to $13.20 per square yard the next year. But we don't know what's going to happen in the next year. What that asphalt cost is going to go up, going to go down, the market fluctuates with these type of things at all. I mean, generally speaking, it goes up some, but not always in construction, not always. And then it goes up the third year as well, and the same with the crack fill. I just, that seemed to stay the same, crack fill stayed the same for some reason over all three years. I would just like to see the numbers drawn up into a contract, so I can see a comprehensive picture of what we're getting ourselves into.
But we're not entering into a contract right now, tonight.
No, ma'am.
This is just voting on this, these prices, these potential prices.
Right, but I don't know, I have nothing to compare this to. You didn't, you didn't send me all three numbers, so I can say, oh, yeah, this is clearly, this guy is, wow, he's giving us a deal. Like, he's definitely coming across, what's the, what's the going rate on these things? You know what I mean? There's just not enough information to make a good decision here with this. I would like it brought, I would prefer to have it brought back to us with the contract you want it put in and a comparison of the prices, so we can actually see what we're agreeing to.
Or when you got these bids, was this company consistently lowest on all of the items there?
All but, all but one. So the lawyers and finances recommendation was overall, this was the lowest vendor. Like, this went through legal and through finance before it came to you all tonight.
Okay, so the only thing this guy's doing, this company's doing, is guaranteeing that if they, if we have a project to do, that they are going to bid no more than $12 a square yard to overlay at this point.
Correct, because there was a legal RF, I mean, a legal IFB done that asked for each of these unit pricings to be listed.
This is just like a not-to-exceed contract for the next three years, but we're free, well, what is it? What would we call this?
We're just...
Is it going to become a con... Prove that?
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I misspeak here, because I'm not super versed on it, I'm just versed with the process itself. It's, you know, you go out and request prices for something that you're going to do a lot of, like, if you've got a lot of small projects, I'm guessing that's what this is, if you've got a lot of small things. And so, like, I use the chair, for example, you know, you could go out, and every time you buy a chair, you could go out and get a price for that one chair, just like Dr. Pierce said. Eventually, vendors will say, well, I'm not going to give you a price on any more chairs, you've contacted me 10 times this year, and you haven't given me any prices, so eventually, stop sending you quotes. And so this way, you can do these small projects, you can guarantee you're going to get some bids on it. And then if you can lock in a price, which is fantastic, agreed, it's kind of, we haven't had this since the COVID days. You know, prior to COVID, you know, this was, you know, utilized a lot more. But, yeah, if you can lock in prices and do a lot of small projects, and know what you're going to pay for, and not have to do quotes every single time, it's kind of a win-win.
Do we know if these prices that he's given us today, are these competitive in today's market?
Based on people in that field, yes.
Okay, so what we see here, that would be competitive if we were to bid a price, say, the Wilson Mills High School parking lot?
Yes.
That would be a competitive bid. Let's say over a million.
Well, we wouldn't be over a million, because we can't do that with this.
Well, I mean...
These are, these are small. Yeah, I think what's being missed here, board, is that anything over 90 is still coming to you all, you know that. Anything over 3,000, we're then getting into a situation, or 5,000, we're getting into a situation where we got to get three bids, come fix this pothole, fix this subgrade. And so what we're trying to do is get a unit price for the jobs under the 90 mark, above the 5,000 mark, lock somebody in and tell them, hey, we're going to be committed to you, what can you commit to us, and do the work. Anything, nothing's going to happen any different than any other time. And if we find out, you know, someone comes up and says, well, I can do it for $1.99, then we can go with $1.99, we don't have to take the $2. It's just trying to put out to people to say, give us your best offer, so we will lean on you to help us with those small in-between jobs.
And I don't have a problem with the concept. What I have a problem, what I've had a problem with is that we aren't seeing... If you would just give us the market rate for these particular items and compare it to those numbers, that would be helpful, so then we can have something to compare it to, that we know, you know, we're not $3 over market rate on asphalt or whatever, like... And because we are, we are committing, it sounds like, to this contractor, this subcontractor, to give him all our small jobs. And so I want to see the contract that we're also going to, I know that this is just a pricing, I understand that part. I want to see if it's competitive, and the secondary part of this, and it doesn't have to happen tonight, is that I would like to see the contract before we agree to use this individual exclusively for our small work.
Is there going to be a contract if we, that was, I asked that question earlier, I wasn't, I didn't understand anything.
Based on what I understand, this is just this particular company guaranteeing that this, he would do that job at $12 a square foot, you know, if we come to him. Now, another option would, you know, and I'm hearing that, doesn't make any difference, we can go out and bid it anyway if we want to. So, you know, I would just make a motion that we would accept it based on what we're hearing from our folks here. We're not, it doesn't look like we got anything to lose, let's go.
Right, that's, that's the point that we... Right.
Y'all lost.
But that's, again, that's my main concern, is we don't, we don't lose anything. Because my guess is, if the prices get too high, this company is going to, is going to reneg, and we can't, we're not going to do anything about it. But at the same time, we can reneg as well. So it's kind of like, we're going to call you first kind of thing, is what they're, we're agreeing to.
And we did discuss that, Matt, we'd also go back and recheck two years from now if it's competitive or not. And if it's not competitive, we don't go with the company. This is just getting to the contract, and we don't approve it until after the contract.
It sounds like there isn't going to be a contract, that these are just going to be the numbers, and there's no contract obligating either one of us now, that's, is that correct? Am I, am I understanding that correct? Because that there, that there won't be a contract that, that...
I think we might need to check back on this, because my understanding is there was going to be a contract with this company to lock in these prices for three years. Now, I'm not sure if something has changed between our office and y'all, so maybe that's something we have to talk to you about. But my understanding, there was going to be a contract that incorporated the terms of the proposal, or the bid request, into the contract itself, along with your standard terms and conditions, et cetera. So we might need to have a discussion to see if there's been something that's changed since then.
I think... No, I'm fine, so we can back out.
Right, my understanding of what we were going to have presented to the board initially, and again, I'm not sure if something's changed, was that this would just be to lock in the prices.
I, I, I move to table this item, Madam Chair. Do we need to get rid of it, though? I thought we could table it in the middle of it.
We have a motion and a second, and we've been through the discussion. If it is the pleasure of the board, what we'll do is vote down the motion to approve, and then we will ask to table it. Is that okay? And bring it back next month. Okay, so, I mean, you vote as you want to vote, I'm just saying, that is a possibility. So with any other discussion about this?
This is now approval for a contract, or just approval to move to a contract that then comes back to the board? For the contract approval?
Just accept the vote on the process. We're voting to table it and come back to the board with the contract to force a decision.
I don't know that legally we can, we can just, we can have a preferred vendor without a contract. I don't know that we can just turn work over to one particular contract without bids, without a contract with that company. And that's what I'm trying to get at.
Mr. Britt, do you have any knowledge of that?
So, and the attorney can correct me if I misspeak here, but this is very similar to what a state does with state contracts. So let's say the state wants to get pricing on laptops, you know, for all across the state. It'll go in and do an IFB or a bidding process, and different vendors will come in and say, this is my price for Adele, X, Y, Z, that sort of thing. And then the state will award a contract for it. There's not, there's not a dollar amount that's attached to that, because as school districts, you know, we can elect to participate in that, in that contract and buy from off of that. This is very similar to that process, not exactly the same, but it's very similar. It just says, this is the pricing that the vendor is offering to us, so that we can go forth and utilize that pricing.
And that's correct, that contemplated in the IFB is that you would have to enter into a separate contract for any project, and that's correct.
So you've got a contract, but you would need another contract to do the actual work.
Right, so if, so if they go forth and say it's a $98,000 process or parking lot that's got to be done, it's got to come back to the board, and the board has to approve that contract for that $98,000 thing. So you're just approving us to be able to use this method of pricing.
And you recommend this?
Yes, I would love to do more of this if the, if the market changes and we're able to utilize this in the future.
And I don't have a problem doing that, as long as, if there's going to be a contract, then the board needs to see the contract. If there's not going to be a contract, and this is just, you know, this almost sounds like an old handshake kind of thing, and this is what she's going to do it for, and whoever wants to back out can back out. But what I'm saying is, if we're going to have a contract attached to this after we vote, then the board needs to see the contract before we vote on it.
But every job would have a contract.
No, I'm, I'm talking about, because I don't want, I don't want the assumption to be made that we're going to do everything through this company for the next three years.
Essentially, this is what, it's a no-bid contract, that's what we're doing here.
For those, and if we, because, and again, that was the question we asked last week. If we want to, if we want to get Joe's paving down the road, says I'm going to do this cheaper than this, we want to be able to get Joe to come do it.
And you can do that?
Well...
Right, right now, what they're presenting to you is no contract, they just want your approval for these prices, that they can move forward and enter in, or begin to enter into discussions for a contract that will eventually be brought to the board. So there's no contract before you right now, what's before you is, do you approve of these prices and them working to engage this company?
Well, when you, if you're going to, if you're going to do it that route, then when you come back to the board with the contract, then share the other, other company's process with this.
There won't be any other companies, it's a no-bid contract.
No, no, the ones for this already, no, what I'm saying, for this already. Right, the other two bids, they were for this, if you can just share those companies and what those, they were.
So if, maybe if I can give you a couple of scenarios of like how this would work. So, for example, let's say a park, a pothole develops out here in the parking lot in the Simpson Building, and looking at their price list, it's going to be, you know, $2,000 to fill that hole. Nothing would come back to the board, we would utilize this, this pricing, there wouldn't really be a contract per se, it was just because it's a small dollar amount. And so we would just, you know, hire that company to go fill the hole based off of this pricing. But it would enable, you know, facility services not to have to go get three quotes for every time a pothole.
I think we can ta, I looked it up, because I was looking for...
Right, and that...
I think we can table this motion, we can table it. I would like to table the motion until we can get more information presented the next month.
I would like some clarification before you move away. Sorry, I've been trying to jump in for this. So we put out a, like, a bid process for, for companies to bid on. And so then we got the bids, we looked at the bids as our district people do, and decided on the company that offered us the best prices overall for the bids. It traveled through finance and our legal, who reviewed this information. And then you guys brought it to us last weekend, Agenda Review with this. All right, I'm just trying to make sure I am clear on the process. So it has been vetted by you in finance, and it has been vetted by our legal department as well.
Correct.
Okay. Do we normally have access to all the other bids when you bring us information? Or do we usually rely on y'all to make that call for us?
Yeah, I don't normally bring the alternate bids in whenever I do a contract. I'm not sure if others do that. I do not.
Well, no, but see, that's, that's the point. That's my, that is the point. What you just said, when you bring the contract. That's my question. Do we have a contract or do we not have a contract? Because, and because, I mean, our attorney's saying it was her, it was her understanding you had a contract. Now, if you don't have a contract, the heck with it. What, you mean, it's not as. Is this going to, is this going to become a contract? That's where we vote on this.
So larger projects, 90, larger projects, $90,000 and above that have to come to the Board will have a, you know, will have that.
I mean, is there going to be a contract that we have to use this company?
No, there's no obligation to use this company.
Is that, is that what you were thinking it was a contract for?
No, my, my understanding is you always have the option. You can use this company or you can source it from another, another source.
So that, that $2,000 pothole that we fixed, if, if Joe's paving does $1,000, we can call Joe to come do it.
So let me, let me see if I can clarify this. Legal, because Brandon's the one we use a lot. So legal says, based on what I know, the contract that if the Board approves this unit pricing, the contract is just that we would, they would be held to the unit pricing of the, that would be the contract. But it would not be the contract for any job. So each job still has to have its own contract, because when we do projects, everything is based off of general conditions, supplemental conditions, and a contract. This is just the avenue that legal and finance said we had to go through to present it to you to do, to even start that process, to do the contract for, it's really obligating them, not us, to this pricing. But it's not tying us to any job, just to the pricing. Well, it ties us to this company as far as for this pricing, but it doesn't tie us to a job. So we could never use them in three years. We wouldn't have to use them.
So the proposed contract, it looks like contract term would begin on September 1st and end on December 31st, 2027. That's the only thing, is the term and the pricing?
Yes.
Okay. My question is, in 2027, let's say prices drop, do we keep a pulse on that to make sure that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I just, I didn't know how that worked. Okay.
Well, if you're doing, so these are small projects that you're working on, probably, like, filling the cracks in a parking lot, repaving a small parking lot, things like that. So it is, it is rep, sorry. So that, that, what you're saying is these, we're going to take these prices, we're not going to go get three bids, we're just going to accept these prices this gentleman gave us, and we're going to move forward with the contract without a bid process for all these small jobs based on these prices that he's giving us today. So that's why we're saying we're not getting a contract, because these are going to be no-bid jobs in the future. So yes, each job will have an attached contract when they come along, but there's no bidding process. There's no fairness to other contractors that may want to work for the district in terms of paving these little projects. And you're saying it's out of necessity because a lot of times we aren't getting enough bids. So all of a sudden, we don't have the three bids. We only have one or two bids, and we have to keep going back to the pool trying to get enough bids, and it delays projects. And I understand the concept. I just don't think there's quite enough information yet to fully implement this. I would just like more information. So I asked to table it, and we can table a motion that has been seconded and discussed. We can table it, and the, my motion to table actually needs to be voted on. And then you can, and if it's voted down, then you can proceed with your, the, the original motion that was standing.
Right.
No, not for a tabling.
And the motion to table could supersede, would supersede the, that's correct.
Okay, so you're making a motion to table this. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of tabling this, this request, I guess until the next meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Okay, so we are not tabling it. Now we will move forward and vote on the first and second motions that we had originally to approve these prices for paving. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay, 5-2. All right, thank you. Thank you for the discussion. All right, Ms. Whittington.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Andrews, Vice Chair Tippett, Dr. Pierce, and members of the Board. I have two policies tonight, or this afternoon still, for review. These are action items, Policy 4218, Use of Wireless Communication Devices, and Policy 3225/4312/7320, Technology Responsible Use. In recent legislation, House Bill 959, Session Law 2025-38, revisions were made addressing clear guidelines for the use of cell phones to include educational purposes. The policy committee met and are recommending the following changes in light of this recent legislation. In Policy 4318, Use of Wireless Communication Devices, Page 1A, Third Paragraph, Fourth Sentence, adding "and teachers" and "educational purposes." So the sentence would then read, Administrators and teachers may authorize individual students to use personal electronic devices for communicating during a crisis, educational purposes, or for unforeseen needs. Also, on this policy, under elementary, middle, and high school, it is recommended to strike the last sentence of each of those paragraphs, which read, Staff may use phones for emergency response purposes and when not responsible for supervising or educating students. Also, in this policy, we have added a Section D, which is Report Policy to Department of Public Instruction. It is now a policy that this policy be reported to the Department of Public Instruction by September 1st, and any subsequent changes will be sent to DPI as well thereafter. Yes, September 1st, 2026.
This is an action item. I want to entertain a motion.
Some hope.
I have a motion by Mr. Donovan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lee. Any discussion?
The only thing, and after I think, after thinking about it more, and these policies go together. Because what we did, you, you struck out the, the staff may use phones for emergency response purposes, which is, and you're not saying that that's not part of the policy, but I think you're attaching it to another policy. And I think the purpose of doing that was because the 43 series, the 4,000 series of students. But you're attaching it to a policy that's also the 4,000 series. And it has the other series with it. And what I would request is that that statement stay in this policy, and that when you request, because it needs to be in both places for uniformity. And then when you request a number for this, then you request, you add the other policy number to this, the same way the other policies are, because it, then it mashes the multiple policies that we have. But you're not taking, you're not taking, you're not discarding the statement, right? You're just putting that statement in another policy.
In the policy.
In the next policy you're looking at.
But the policy is different than the other policy. I mean, the statement is different than the other policy, because it's not a copy and paste. Staff members have been allowed to use them for educational purposes. Is that not correct?
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the, the the other policy, the other policy which I lost.
The other policy is Policy 3225431273, Technology Responsible Use. And under E is Use of Personal Technology or School System Property. And the statement that was added in that policy says, Staff may use cell phones for emergency purposes, educational purposes, and when not supervising or instructing students. So it's basically telling when teachers can use their phone.
It's given the guidance for the teachers.
But you take that out of the cellphone policy and put it in another policy.
But it's not the same.
Well, they took it out of the student, took the staff out of the student one.
But the other policy is a student policy.
Technology responsible use is geared more toward the staff.
If it has, if it has 43 series, the 4,000 series, that's in the student tab. That's why they have multiple, multiple numbers. There are multiple policies that relate to staff and students.
This policy relates to students and employees, the one you're referring to, the responsible use for technology.
Technology responsible use for all, for students and staff and employees.
Right.
That is my understanding.
Yeah.
And volunteers.
Right.
And then your 4318 is geared straight to students.
It's just straight.
Are you asking to keep the original statements in Policy 4318? The, the ones that were.
Well, the similar things, because the, both those policies, because both those policies are the same, are very similar. I mean, you're, but both are electronic devices, technology, electronic devices, right? Yep.
The, the 3,000 series is educational programs, the 4,000 series is for students, and the 7,000 series is for personnel.
Right. So if you, so you would, you would attach the 7,000 series to the 4318, and then they would apply it to your staff, your personnel and students? Because that's what, that's what you're saying it already does. I mean, I get why, I get why you don't want it to only be for students. I get that. And I apologize that we overlooked that. I mean, that, that we, we should have, I apologize for that mistake. Because they put it directly on the student tab. So, but what should have was another policy in the, in the personnel or in the, or the 1,000 series, the governing principles, to have it applying to different groups. Because again, if you look through those things, you're going to see 13, 14 policies that apply to staff and students, staff, employees, and students. I mean, it's not, but.
I think, I think the law is requiring us to create a student policy, correct? And our reporting is just for the policy for the students. That's why we didn't want staff inside that student policy, because that's, at the very bottom, we created that reporting, and it was geared toward the students. Yeah.
And, yeah, I'm sorry, any other discussion? The, the Policy 32254312 and 7320 speaks to employees, it speaks to students, it speaks to teachers, speaks to all, all individuals. I think that's why the policy committee decided to put that there. Any other discussion?
We added educational purposes for, for the students. For, for what reason? Because I think it was discussed early on that we wanted to utilize the computers that we have spent so much money on, that were in the classrooms for them to use if they needed an electronic device to be looking things up for educational purposes. Was there something in the, in the final? And, but we can be more restrictive than the law. That's the key. We don't have to, as long as we are more restrictive, not less restrictive, correct?
I think.
So I'm wondering why we're going to open that door back up.
I think the law says that we have to give. I think the law says that we have to give the teachers the ability to let kids use their cellphone. We can't tell them, teachers can't do it.
I see the attorney shaking her head no back there.
So the, the law says that teachers can allow it, doesn't mean that we have to allow it. So we can be more, like Ms. Antoine said, we can be more restrictive in this respect. If we wanted kids to have their cell phones off all day, you know, bell to bell, and, and teachers off bell to bell, we could do that, and with no exceptions. So we could do that. That's not what the law requires, but we could go that far if we wanted to.
I don't understand why would, why they need their phones. This is for the students. We are talking, I'm, I am speaking directly to Policy Code 4318. I was talking about the students, because we've added in for the students that they can use their phone for educational purposes. I think that, that's problematic for me. Why are we spending all the money on the Chromebooks, the one-to-one computing, all this stuff? Is that going away? What's the purpose? We're trying to get the phones out of their hands during the day. Now we're going to open it up. We, you know.
But it is under teacher direction, correct? It is not for any other.
And teachers may authorize.
I think the issue is the law said the teacher shall have the authority for educational purposes.
It reads a wireless, a wireless communication policy.
The law is clear that the teacher can give them the authority to use their, their phones. Now, we still have the, the, the overlying thing is, I know you all know this, in elementary, middle, and high, we have the boundaries about these phones, that they're going to be powered down, put away. The only reason that they could get them out, if I understand correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, is if the teacher allows them. And it has to be, it's based on educational reasons. That's what I understood it to be. Is that correct? I mean, the only way a student can get their phone out, any, for any reason, I agree, they need to be put away. It would be if a teacher gives them the authority to do so. I'm not backing off on what this Policy 4318 says about elementary, middle, and high school students. It's been made clear to the principals. This is the rule. Yeah.
We, we, we could still remove it. Is that correct, that we could still remove the provision under educational? And, and here's the thing, we have all these computers. We have purchased all these computers. We have spent millions and millions of dollars for every student to have access to a computer. If there's an educational purpose, what is it that they can't do on their Chromebook that they can, need their phone for? I think we open Pandora's backs, and, and, and I think kids are bored, and kids get pester-y, and kids say, oh, I want to research your paper. And the teacher's like, okay, you can research your paper. And they turn on their phone, and the next thing you know, they're playing video games. And I'm speaking from experience as a mom of boys who turn on their phones, and they're playing video games after they told me they were going to research a paper or do whatever. I think if we get them out of their hands, and we get them focused on education, it would be better if, if we can just try it.
Any other discussion? Good discussion. But this is an action item that we vote on tonight. We do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
No, I don't, I don't have, my biggest issue is with the uniformity in the policies. And that's why I tried to tell you, I was sharing with the numbers and things. Because I just think when Board Policy 4318 says use of, use of wireless communication devices, the other policy says technology responsible use, that they go together.
Yeah.
But, but anyway.
All right. Any other discussion? I understand.
I just think it's real important, when you vote on this, that implementation of the consequences are paramount here for administrators and teachers, and just to make sure it's done in a uniform way.
Yeah. And that the expectation has been set.
Absolutely.
This is what we're going to do.
And I don't have a problem with, you know, that, you know, the, you, you did educational use, because the teachers are saying they need those, those devices in their classrooms to do different things, to, to, uh, different apps and things that the classrooms do. But, but I do see, I do see the, I do see the possibility of students, of this policy being an issue. Now, we've, we've said, don't use it. And then if a student, students are told they can use it, you're going to have a teacher now walking around a classroom looking at students' phones the rest of the classroom, the, the rest of the class time. I mean, that, that part is the biggest issue I have with that. I mean, that, that part is, is the biggest issue I have with that.
And Terry, I'll.
Any other?
When we come back to the policy committee meeting, which we won't have one this month, but we'll have one next month, um, we'll discuss those numbers on that as well. Because I'm, I'm generally, I'm curious on, on all of that as well.
Do we have, do you have the specific numbers you're thinking in mind, Mr.?
Oh, no, it's, it's because you have to ask for the numbers.
You have to request them.
We can't just pick numbers and do it, but it would, it would be a number associated something, because this is with that other policy.
You're talking about adding numbers.
Yeah. It's adding a policy, it would be in the three thousand policy, the seven thousand series, as well as, is that so that it's uniformity for, I read some of these things for other counties and things.
I'm glad you did.
And, and it's just a uniformity among the, the numbers is all it is.
I'll commit to.
And again, as I said before, I take, I mean, I certainly apologize that we didn't do that beforehand and just listed it under the student tab, because I think that caused a lot of, uh, a lot of bad feelings. And I, and again, I'm, I'm sorry that happened, um, because it wasn't meant just for, it wasn't meant to throw, uh, staff under a student policy, that's just where we went. But I think the, what we, what we should have done was have a, was have that, the other policy that, that brought that tied it together, so to speak.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm, I'm just, I'm wondering if this is just performatory at this point, if we're just going to say, no phones, but actually phones. When we say, oh, you can have them for educational purposes, we can have them for this, you can have, and then all of a sudden, phones are out, and they're in kids' hands again, and we really haven't solved any problem, we just made ourselves feel good, and we put a bunch of stuff in place. And that's not just for us. I mean, I think we're being directed by the general assembly. Like, I just feel like if we're going to do it, let's do it. Let's not, why are we, you know, I think it just, it just makes me wonder what we're doing, you know what I mean? Because I think it becomes more difficult. I think to Terry's point, like, are we going to go, are we, now we're assigning teachers to walk around the classroom, and they see a, a student with the phone out, and they're like, and I know you say that this, the teacher has to direct them or what, what have you, but, and then there's an argument, well, I'm looking up definitions, or I'm using it as a calculator, I'm, you, you know what I mean? Then there's this whole, I, I, again, I'm speaking from my own personal experience, dealing with kids and cell phones, and that you just deal with these issues. Then if you just say, you know what, we're not going to do it, we're not going to have them in your hands, and you just don't have the argument, and it just puts the focus where it needs to be on education. And that's my only concern. My concern is not dividing and taking out the teachers, I'm fine with that, I have no problem with that, I understand that they're using different apps and things to, for all different kinds of student things. I don't have an issue with that. My issue is that we're actually just putting the phones right back in the kid's hand, and have we actually accomplished anything?
But Dr. Pierce, we, we give you that authority, and that, I have heard Dr. Pierce speak to the principals about this, and if you want to make any comments about your direction.
I just think it's important to understand that you all corrected the code of conduct. There is a first, second and third offense. If the teachers have not told them to pull their phone out, and their phone's out, everyone should understand the student will be disciplined. And so only the teacher would have the chance to say that they give them a chance to pull them out. I do not believe, I, I believe we need to have a wait and see. This can only get better. As we all know, I don't think it can get much worse. I don't mean that ugly, but it's, it's probably as worse as it could be right now with disruptions, and we are taking them out and making it clear that from bell to bell, they should not be out. And I'd like to give the staff a chance, and let's, if we need to adjust it, I'd be the first one to come back here and tell you, you know, adjust it. But I, I don't feel like, I feel like the code of conduct drives home what the board's expectations are, and I have shared with them what yours expectations and mine are, which is, we're here to learn, not be on device.
And I get that, and I think there's some confusion there. I think it, I think it is confusing to a fourteen-year-old to say, you know, well, the policy says you can, if you're using it for educational purposes, you could use it. So they're using it as a calculator, they're using it's that, and a teacher comes around and say, hey, why are you on your phone? Then all of a sudden, there's this discussion about it that doesn't have to be there. That's my whole point. It's, and I think it could actually get worse, because now you're being punitive on top of it. So now you're saying, well, now you got a three-day suspension because you had your phone out, and the kid's like, well, wait a minute. I'm confused, because you're saying I can't have them, but I can have them. Kids need structure, and they need rules, and it needs to be very intentional. So that's my concern with this, is that we actually are making it worse. That's it.
Right. And, and I, I mean, I'm, I mean, I will support this, and, and Dr. Pierce, I mean, it's like, I just feel like we're giving teachers more of a headache. I, I, I mean, that, you know, and I, you know, but it's, it's, and they have enough to do as it is, but like I said, I, it, it takes fifteen seconds for a student to do a text, or less, when, when I'm doing my research in here. It takes five seconds for me to send a, a YouTube to somebody. I, I, I'm just saying, it's almost like we're shooting ourselves in the foot. But, but if, again, if we want, I mean, I will support it, if we want to try it, and Doc, you know, Dr. Pierce, I would hope, you know, you know, the administrators make sure that they are aware of it, and they're going to have to, to be on top of it as well, because otherwise, it is going to get back, it's not going to be a change at all. That's what, that's what my fear is. Because we do, we do things to try and help, and then we, we do other things, and, and it, it ends, it ends up not helping at all. And, and, uh, that, that's my biggest concern. So as long as our, our principals are on top of it, and, and communicating with the superintendent, and he's back with the policy committee and all that kind of stuff, then, that I will, you know, I will support it as long as we can, we can make sure we're doing that.
Yeah, I agree. I, I trust the leadership here, especially that we've got with keeping their hands on the pulse of what's going on. Like Pierce said, if there's an issue, he'll be the first to tell us. He's always been the first to tell us that there's a problem. So I, I think that if there is a kid on the phone, and the teacher did not give them the authority to be on there, then automatically just start the, the process of your code of conduct.
Does our, does the policy direct that? Hold on, it just says for educational purposes.
It says administrators and teachers give the authority to, and if they, and if a kid has them out, and they haven't been given the authority.
They start the process. I was going to say, the policy is clear, it says administrators and teachers may authorize individual students to use personal electronic devices, um, for those three reasons, a crisis, educational purposes, or, um, unforeseen needs. I think it is clear that teachers may, and administrators may tell them to use it, like, hey, there is an announcement that says, um, due to the rain today, the soccer game has been canceled. It's easier for us to have our kids get out the, their phones and let their parents know that way than everybody lining up in the front office at the school to use the school phone or use the classroom phones, right? So I think it's clear, and I think that as long as teachers understand that their administrators are going to support them when they have to go through the process, right? And if Dr. Pierce has been clear about that, and our principals understand that, then our teachers should feel supported in that, and we should be good. Okay. Any other discussion? Here and then.
Just another, from an administrative standpoint, um, I just want to make sure, I, I support what we're doing here, and I think it leaves it up to the teachers, but also want to make sure we provide the support from the county office standpoint, superintendent's office, that we don't monopolize administrators running around through the school having to implement this when they could, they should be instructional leaders. So let's not forget that aspect of it, too. So just making sure that we're very clear from the communication of the superintendent on down that we follow this, whether it is a sign at the front of the room says no cell phones, that's pretty clear, everybody could read that. You say at the very beginning, if you take role, no cell phones today, that's pretty clear.
Right.
I had a, I had a great conversation with a principal this past week, and I asked him about the cellphone policy and, and what he planned, because you have to, there, there's got to be a warning first. And he, I said, how do you plan on implementing this? Is this a heavy lift? Is this going to cause a lot of issues for these guys? He said, nope. He said, the very first thing I'm going to do over the intercom in the morning announcements is put your phone away, this is your first warning. And then the rest of the day, I expect you not to be on it. So it was.
Let's have a little confidence in our crowd out there to get this done, and if it, if it, if it goes astray, we'll come back together. But I, I think everyone around this horseshoe and this administration, we are serious. Get rid of the cell phones. Turn them off, put them away. If a teacher has you get it out for a purpose, and they tell you to put it up, you better put it up, because if you don't, you're going into offense one, two and three. So let's give, let's give them a little, let's have some confidence in our crowd to do this, but, um, I agree. We all, I think we all understand that this has to happen. We got to get rid of them. Okay. So we are at, we do have a motion a second a while ago, but, um, now I'll ask for the vote for the approval of policy forty-three eighteen. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll go to the next one.
Yes, and policy thirty-two, thirty-five, slash forty-three, twelve, seventy-three, twenty, technology responsible use, section E, use of personal technology on school system property, adding sentence two. And that sentence says, staff may use phones for emergency purposes, educational purposes, and when not supervising or instructing students.
I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Carroll, who have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lee, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those approval, approval, approving of policy thirty-two, twenty-five, forty-three, twelve and seventy-three, twenty, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move now into our committee updates.
All right, bond committee, bond and construction committee, uh, has a meeting scheduled Thursday morning at eight-thirty to discuss the ongoing projects and future projects. Give us an update from our folks.
Okay, legislative committee, Ms. Antoine.
We have a legislative breakfast set for Monday, October thirteenth. It'll be at eight AM at Facility Services, and we look forward to having, um, great, some, our legislators are going to be there, and we're going to have some mayors hopefully attending, and other people from around the community to give us some input and to discuss impending legislation and goals for the schools.
Good. Policy committee, Mr. Donovan.
Yes, Mr. Terry, we had, um, we had our policy committee where we discussed the wireless cell phones that we just approved. We have second reads, but we just approved them in the, um, the consent, thanks, Dr. Pierce. And then we are not going to have a meeting this month, but we will have a meeting September eleventh at nine AM.
Okay. I don't have many things. Teachers are back. They came back yesterday, I think all of them are back today, I've been around to some of us, a lot of excitement in the air, our new teachers are here, they came in last week, had some orientation time, but school starts, you know, I thought the summer was really long, thirteen weeks has gone by like a snap, hadn't it? But, um, but we're just excited about a new school year, um, and we will move forward with that and excited about that. Now we will move forward with our advisory appointments. I will, uh, consider the first appointment done by Mr. Carroll as our motion, and then we'll have a second at the end.
Okay, Madam Chairman, I'm going to do both schools that I have at one time, if you don't mind. Principal Dana Jernigan from Benson Middle School, her advisory council has recommended Elgin Alford, Randy Peters, Sandra Jones and Candace Boge for three-year appointments to their parent advisory council, that's Benson Middle School. Principal TJ Parrish from Four Oaks Elementary School, and his advisory council has recommended Adam Caldwell and Melissa Roberts to their advisory council for a three-year term.
All right, Mr. Sullivan.
I have recommendations from Clayton High School, from, uh, Principal Ms. Morris, as well as the advisory council members at Clayton High School, to recommend the following applicants.
Clayton Middle.
Oh, Clayton.
Is it made?
Is that what I say?
Clayton, no.
That's what happens when you work there for fifteen years. Clayton Middle. And so, uh, Ms. Morris and the advisory council members recommend the following applicants to the advisory council upon board approval. It is Amira Herman, Heemans, a two-year, uh, term for appointment. She is going to serve an abbreviated appointment because her daughter will be leaving Clayton Middle School in twenty-twenty-seven. Justin Howell, three-year term. And Rowan Reich, uh, three-year term for appointment.
Mr. Donovan.
Madam Chair, Ms. Genosols here has made recommendations for an appointment for their advisory council. They're suggesting, um, the following people for three-year terms, Catherine Vogel, Catherine Daughtry, Alicia Rawls and Jamie Thomas.
And Ms. Antoine.
Principal Lauren Sable of East Clayton Elementary School has three new appointments for approval. She's recommending, uh, for reappointment and appointment, uh, three-year terms for Erin Evans, Truman Beeren and George Moore from twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-eight.
Thank you. And, uh, Principal LaShonda Fason of Smithfield Middle School has actually five appointments. First, Karen Asero, Tanisha Bryant and Melanie Jimenez are for approval for a three-year term, twenty-twenty-five through twenty-eight. And then Pedro Macedo and Deborah David, uh, reappointments for three-year terms from twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-eight. So those are our presentations. I will entertain a second to the original motion.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Tippett, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the approval of all of these appointments that have been recommended. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do, uh, we, our next order of our agenda is public comment. We do not, we don't have public comment till around six-thirty. So we can take a break, um, they can sign up till six? Yeah, so we'll take a break, um, and then come back and, and begin public comment. So we'll be in recess. So we'll be in recess.
Okay, welcome back. We are to the aspect or to the part of our agenda for public comment. Before we begin that, I just want to make a real brief statement just to clarify some stuff, and then I'll read the item that I need to read. But you know, our time for public comment is open to everyone, all who want to come to our meetings, address the board in regards to issues that deal with the business of this board. We welcome anyone who wants to share their concerns, thoughts pertaining to our school system and to this board. Tonight, we're going to change one aspect of our public comment. We will not broadcast the public comments section during this meeting. Public comments will take place, but this segment of our meeting will not be livestreamed. The school district will no longer facilitate the distribution of the information shared through public comment. We do this with the advice of our counsel, legal counsel. There are numerous ways to contact people in our district and our board members. Dr. Pierce is always available through email or phone call, and his staff is as well, and so are the board members. There's no attempt here to prevent transparency, to no attempt to deny access or people to share information, but it is our responsibility to do the things that we feel are in the best interest of Johnston County Public Schools. Teachers, staff, students, parents, and community members, all of those who want to come and share their thoughts with this board are welcome. So we will always listen, and we're always going to take into consideration what you want to share with us because it's important to us. So moving forward tonight, from tonight on, we will not broadcast our public comment section. Tonight, we have two speakers signed up for public comment. Citizens who have signed up to address the board during the public comment session will be recognized in the order in which they signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes to present comments to the board. However, the public comments...
Welcome to Johnston County Public Schools, where innovation meets excellence and every student is inspired to soar. With over 37,000 students and more than 5,000 dedicated professionals, we are more than just a school district. We are a family, a vibrant, growing, diverse community with one clear goal: academic excellence. Our North Star, student proficiency and academic growth. And by staying true to this vision, Johnston County Public Schools has earned district-wide recognition for excellence. As our population grows, so does our commitment. With the help of our Board of Commissioners and dedicated stakeholders, we're building new schools, modernizing facilities, and creating innovative learning environments designed for 21st century success. This is a community-wide effort, a partnership built on trust, collaboration, and a shared vision for the future. At Johnston County Public Schools, we believe that every student deserves the opportunity to thrive, in the classroom and in life. And every educator and employee deserves a career where they can grow and make an impact. We are Johnston County Public Schools, united in purpose and committed to excellence. Join us as we build the future, one student at a time.
Come on, a little bit louder. Forward. And what you need to know, and we know this, is when leaders rise, kids win. And we're all about kids winning.
And I think that the plan that Dr. Pierce has already laid out for us, that he understands that academic and student growth is going to be one of his number one priorities. And as a community, the community, we engage about how we're going to make sure its students are growing at the same time.
Yeah, so I think back to kind of in his opening statement, Dr. Pierce talked a little bit about something that resonated with me, which was being clear is to be kind. And kindness is something that's an important character trait for me. I like to look at it for other people. I want to represent that. And I think that that is one thing I can, a little step that I can take, right? Like clarity in my instruction, or what I'm asking from other people, or what we're going to do and why we're going to do it, is going to be an important step that helps keep it up, helps us keep moving forward as we go through. So I want to be clear, so that I can be kind.
This Assistant Principal is a tremendous asset to the school and to Johnston County Public Schools. She is a highly supportive and positive leader who consistently goes above and beyond for both staff and students. She leads by example, demonstrating a strong work ethic, building meaningful relationships, and maintaining a positive presence throughout the school. Her professional development sessions are engaging and impactful, and she ensures all staff feel heard and valued. From greeting the community to helping with pre-K breakfast, she is deeply involved in all aspects of school life. Her energy, encouragement, and respectful communication make her a role model and make coming to work enjoyable for everyone at school. Please help me congratulate Ms. Lauren Strickland, Assistant Principal of the Year, formerly from Pine Level Elementary and currently the AP at Valenta Elementary. This principal is a transformational leader who sets high expectations while fostering a supportive, positive, and empowering school environment. She is deeply committed to the success of both students and staff, providing the tools, guidance, and encouragement needed for everyone to thrive. Known for her compassion, professionalism, and open-door leadership, she builds strong relationships and leads by example. Under her visionary guidance, our school has seen remarkable improvements in academic achievement, school culture, and community engagement. Our school has become a place where all stakeholders feel seen, heard, and valued. Her visibility, consistency, and empathy set her apart as a truly exceptional leader. Please help me congratulate Dr. Tekisi Dunston, our Amy Renfro Leadership Principal of the Year from Benson Elementary.
I'm so grateful for all of them and the support that they provide every day. I call them my base, because every principal needs a base. You need someone that you can go to in the toughest of times. Ms. Holloman can attest to when I was out with cancer, and I would text her and say, "But I just want to be there so bad." And she'd say, "Take care of you and then come back to us." Because the work is not done, it's only begun. So let's go together throughout this year, making it another great year.
And a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Let's see, I have a motion by Mr. Donovan, a second by Mr. Carroll. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Thank y'all. We are adjourned.